...a very important role in this state. And there's probably no legal team more influential than the folks that originally represented us at McDonald Hall and Allen, and now with EPK. And tonight I will introduce her as our deputy city attorney that we won't take away from Ethan, but obviously Ethan's doing other things tonight. But I'd like to introduce Iris Yang. Iris has done so many things for the city of Winters as we went through not only the redevelopment process, but also the dissolution process. There was probably no better person to have on our side. So sitting in tonight, I'm sure she'll give us just the most sage wisdom. But I'd like to introduce Iris Yang.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Thank you. Okay. Peter Hunter, can you lead us on the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next, we have approval of the agenda.
Mayor, councilor, change the agenda.
I would like to, please.
We'll go with the second.
For a second. Motion on a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass it unanimously. Move on to council and planning commission staff comments. Start with Chairman Meyer.
No comments at this time.
Okay.
Stating for next week's.
Okay. Fine. Okay. Councilmember Lauren.
January 11th, I attended the Valley Clean Energy Meeting with Wade Cowan, and Wade will elaborate on that meeting in a few minutes. On January 11th, along with many of my colleagues, I attended the grand opening of the new Hotel Winters. It was beautiful and was well-attended. On January 13th, I participated in the League of California Cities Valley Region Meeting. We are planning for future events throughout Northern California for our specific Sacramento region. In the evening, I attended the Yolo County Transit District Meeting. It was my first official meeting, and the chair was late, so they said, Jesse, I'm not sure if we told you your vice chair, but go right ahead. So it was a really good time. January 15th, I attended the Winters Childcare Forum. It was a well-attended forum from childcare providers in the city of Winters. And outside of Winters, there was Natalie Dunaway, Central California Childcare Advocate, and Kristy Weber, Program Manager at Children's Home Society. Children's Home Society offers a variety of resources for childcare providers and for parents, including placement and money to go to find childcare, and also education and grants. I see seven rounds in attendance in that meeting, representing first five. It was a really fruitful meeting. There's, I gathered information from that meeting, and I'll be leaving it with Tracy. I forgot to bring it tonight, so if you want to have more information on childcare issues, I'll leave it in the office with Tracy tomorrow. I also, on January 20th, I met with city manager John Donlevy to review tonight's agenda. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Hotel Winters grand opening on the 9th, I believe it was. Very, very well-organized event, I see. And today I had a chance to meet with the city manager and do a pilot run on this, but it's his fault if it doesn't work.
No pressure, John.
That's all.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Newn.
Thank you. I also attended the hotel grand opening. It was on the 11th, I believe, and then on the 15th, I met with our city manager, talked to him about California Statewide Communities Development Authority, and talked to him about whether or not we could get a resolution or to join that organization so that we could possibly be qualified for some seismic retrofit. But also, on the 15th, I had a Yolo County Housing Board Meeting. That was in Woodland. On the 16th, I had the SECAG Board Meeting in Sacramento. On the 21st, now, the 21st, I met with John today. And also during that, the two-week time period in there, I had two or three different discussions. I happened to go into a steady, I mean, some people had things donned out for the segment and we got. And that's, is it for now.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Cowan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. On the 8th, I attended a youth day meeting, and they're moving along with plans for this year's youth day. They're working on a new logo with the traffic arts class at the high school, and it looks like the parade may be a big one this year because I think they're having some kind of Northern California horse judging championship in our parade, so gonna be lots of horses. So I think they're gonna need lots of pooper scoopers. On the 9th, as Councilmember Lauren mentioned, I also attended the DCE board meeting, and one of the things they did is they handed out, they had a local artist commissioned to make these clay logos of theirs for each of the member agencies. So we're gonna give this to John and let him be responsible for finding a place to hang it. And on the 11th, I also attended the Hotel Winters grand opening, and on the 17th, I met with the city manager to review tonight's agenda. And then earlier today, I attended a DCE subcommittee meeting at Supervisor Saylor's office in Davis. That committee and that board has a large learning curve, but there's a lot involved there, a lot of moving parts, and it's gonna be interesting to see how that all comes together, what happens through PG&E's bankruptcy and all that. So we'll see how it goes. That's all I have.
Thank you. On January 10th, I attended the chamber board meeting. They're making plans for the toast to Winters, which will be this Saturday, the 25th, at Hotel Winters. If you haven't got tickets yet, check and see if they're still available. It's always a great event. On the 11th, I attended the Hotel Winters grand opening. On the 13th, I attended the Winters Peter Creek Park Committee Meeting. We had some good discussion there. One of the things that I will ask to put on a future agenda, the committee wants some input from the council as far as what we see as the role of the committee in the future. Talked about things that they've done in the past since it was started, and they want some input from council members and from the city on what that committee should be doing for the future. On the 14th, I attended the Affordable Housing Steering Committee Meeting. We discussed affordable housing for the Walnut Lane 10 project, and we had some discussion with a group from Neighbor Works about some, building some sweat equity homes. And on the 20th, I met with the city manager for the agenda review. Thank you, everyone, for all your time put in on these committees. We appreciate it. All right. At this time, we'll move on to public comments on anything that is not listed on tonight's agenda. If there's anyone that would like to speak on a non-agendized item, this is your chance. Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to the consent calendar.
Mayor, council, a bunch of things on the consent calendar tonight. I am mayor, minutes from the regular meeting on January 7th. Item B is a resolution. This is an on-call contract for both water and sewer engineering services. This has to do with both our water and sewer master plans. In the event that we have applications from folks which require a review calculation regarding our overall water and sewer capacity, it has to go through a fiduciary, and in this case, we're recommending we're currently be on-call to the understanding for us. Item C, our two member amendments of understanding. One is for our Police Officers Association, the other is for our Fire Association. Both of these represent at least about a year of discussion with both our police officers and firefighters. It provides for some cost of living allowances. I can tell you that as far as the overall agreements, I think they represent a very good point in relations between the city and our public safety units. Item D is a contract with Catherine Hansford. She is somebody that we've been using to look at our various impact fees. We're looking for a contract to look at two different ones. One is our drainage area impact fees, and the second has to do with accessory dwelling units. Lots of legislation on what we can and can't charge as far as impact fees for ADUs, and this will be a chance for us to take a look at that. Item E is a revision for a subordination agreement that we have regarding a program that we offered back in the middle redevelopment days when we had an opportunity to assist both firefighters, teachers, and police officers who might want to buy a home. In this case, we have one requesting a subordination, which typically we don't do, but in this case, the note's been out long enough, there's plenty of equity, and we are recommending that we reduce the term agreement. Item F is a claim that was filed against the city. Item G is the public improvement agreement for the Fairville Inn project, for them to get started. Item H is a budget adjustment. This has to do with El Río Villa. It provides for two major improvements. One is for backup generators to go out there, the second is for lighting that goes along with that. These items are covered. We have an agreement with Yolo Housing Authority. With that, we are basically using their money to put an improvement out there. So it's a good deal. And finally, item I is an exclusive negotiating agreement with Neighbor Works, the mayor mentioned. Presented before the Affordable Housing Committee is a proposal for a 26-unit sweat equity project that would go in. We have a two-acre parcel located in the Stone Throw subdivision. What an exclusive negotiation agreement does, it gives you the ability to sit down in confidence with somebody and actively negotiate, and overall, in this case, development agreement and a purchase sale agreement. It gives you, gives us a chance to get into their financials regarding the overall project. Notwithstanding, any type of an agreement or anything still has to come back through the council. The project needs to still go through the planning commission and into the city council. So this is a 90-day exclusive negotiation agreement. And if there are any questions, I'll try and answer them.
Any questions? Any questions? Do you have questions on the consent calendar? Okay, from move on. No questions. We have a motion for approval. We have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close. None. Passed unanimously. And we're gonna move on. We have a special presentation tonight honoring the Yochi Dehi Fire Department Fire Chief, Kerry Fredrickson, on his retirement. We have a plaque for you and a...
Mayor, why don't I get up and, I'd like to introduce and maybe say something about you. The way we've got the room set up tonight, you probably doesn't need the fire code, so... I was getting concerned. Don't worry, he can help us out. So to introduce, this is Chief Kerry Fredrickson, or former Chief Fredrickson. He is somebody who I would best describe, I've been here in Yolo County for over 18 years, and I don't think I've met anybody in the fire service who has represented as well as Chief Fredrickson. Absolute leader in Yolo County to the benefit of Winters and everybody. Chief Fredrickson worked in West Sacramento. He was a spearhead in the formation of what is known as the West Valley Training Consortium. Many of the improvements we have in our 911 service in Yolo County are directly attributable to Chief Fredrickson. Not only has he brought his influence from West Sac training, his expertise, one of the things that a lot of people don't realize is that when everything is going wrong, there needs to be somebody who really takes control. Fire actually, fire agencies play very well together, and Chief Fredrickson literally became the chief of chiefs when things went down. I sat with Chief Fredrickson various times. I sit on the board for our 911 agency, and without question, Chief Fredrickson not only brought his expertise, but also, it's really great when somebody who is associated with the tribe can also bring money to solving problems. He did that. Without question, generosity of the Yochi Dehi Winters Nation has been overwhelming, and in many ways, Chief Fredrickson played a very important role in that. So with that, we've got a proclamation on behalf of the city for Chief Fredrickson. You know, I say nothing but bad things about good people when they retire. So I try to pay a little tribute to Chief Fredrickson, even though I think it's really sad that he's retired. So Chief, on behalf of the city of Winters, and really, hopefully for all Yolo County, I hope people will give gratitude for what you have brought to our county, and hopefully you don't rest too well in retirement, and you come out and help us on various, and so on behalf of the city, congratulations.
Thank you. I'm gonna thank you, council. Thank you. Sad to say, I've been in Winters a lot. I've been here on waterway fires, I've been here on hayfires, I've been here on crane accidents, I've been here on a lot of incidents in this. What I will say is the city of Winters has professional firefighters that are there doing their job. And what amazes me, I start calling resources in to help, and all these volunteers start showing up with other rigs, and I'm going, where are these guys coming from? They just keep coming, and they keep coming. So the dedication of the fire department is unbelievable in the city of Winters. And then, when something happens, somewhere else in the county, they still show up and they're helping them elsewhere. So I appreciate that. John Dundley started working with us at Yega, I don't know, five years ago, six years ago, and he brought a rotten picture to Yega. We were operational, we thought, always thinking, we gotta fix this or do this, and he's going, we need to plant the picture. So I appreciate it. You've been a great colleague at Yega. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Now we're gonna move on to discussion items. We have one discussion item on tonight's agenda, which is the workshop on community engagement. Do you have any?
Mayor, council, members of the planning commission, tonight's a chance for us to get input, on how we're gonna get input. And we tried to bring in a joint meeting, both the planning commission and the city council, an opportunity for us to sit down and talk a little bit about community engagement. Over the course of probably the next 24 months in Winters, there's a lot of things that are gonna be looked at, a lot of things that bring a lot of emotion and require a lot of planning, and most importantly, require input. So tonight, we've got one topic, and that's have an opportunity to maybe get some input. We've got some polling tools for everybody. Somebody, back in 2002, probably the most controversial thing that we all dealt with was some of the changes of the Lake Barriessa. And we held this public meeting, and there were probably 700 people that showed up, and we needed somebody who was gonna facilitate it. And who did we have do that? But we had our very own Paul Meyer. So Chairman Meyer has graciously offered to step in and help us walk through tonight's workshop, so I want to turn it over to Chairman Meyer. Thank you, John. So tonight's about, as John said, just getting, figuring out the best way to get more community engagement, community input. We have big topics coming at us here very shortly. A lot of opinions have been going around the city on various topics. We need to, we need to pull all of these together, we need to put them in some way that everybody can understand them, can see what everybody's opinion is, and that's what we're gonna work on tonight. One of the things that's happening is this meeting is not just all of you who are here, and thank you for being here. I love this, at the planning commission, it bothers me no end that very often, I mean, we make, we're just volunteers, but we make some really important decisions, and a number of meetings that are the commissioners, the city staff, the petitioner, and the newspaper reporter, and no one else there, and we listen and we make decisions. So this is great to see all these people here, and hopefully in the future, we'll see more. We have a planning commission meeting one week from right now, so hopefully we'll see some of you there. We have more people joining us tonight. They're on YouTube Live, and they're watching this meeting, and on Facebook Live, and along with all of us here. All of the questions that we're gonna be going over are going to be posted on a Google form and after the meeting, so if you're wondering what, if you wanna think back, what was that question about, what's going on, you can go to our website and go to the questions and everything after the meeting. If you want to send in further input, you can address those questions then and send them on into the staff. We're going to do some polling, so take out your phone, or your iPad, or your computer, or if you left all of that, we've got three-by-five cards that still work really well. And so, go to a text message, and the, and hopefully you're faster than me, and hopefully you have more luck with it than I did this afternoon. It took me two tries to get in, but that's because I can't spell. So 2, you put 22333 on 2 on the text message, and then the text message itself is Tracy Jensen, T-R-A-C-Y-J-E-N-S-E-N 454. Hit send and wait a little bit, and hopefully you'll get what I've got here. You're participating with Tracy Jensen, and how we doing? Everybody getting that, do you?
Yep.
Okay, we got it. Anybody still struggling? You don't have to admit it, just... For anybody who doesn't have a cell phone, we have index cards, we have pens, so you can answer on index cards, and we'll come around and pick those up. Yep. Okay. We're going to do, how we doing over here, council?
We're good.
We got it. We're gonna do some test questions, and so everybody gets the hang of it. And Tracy, let's go to a test question. Okay. Who's going to, who's going to win the Super Bowl? You simply put down A, B, C, D, or E, and hit send, and all your answers are gonna see start to pop right up there.
What are the odds?
Nobody state farm? Come on. Or Fox, Fox TV, because they get all the state farm of the butt my ass, yeah, that's it.
Those of you that said the chiefs are now welcome to lead?
Yes. You already put, we still need it, and we know who you are. They are, yes. Okay. So you see how it works. Let's go on to another test question. What is your favorite nut? That's not anybody here that's actually fruit, and put them down almond or almond, either one. There we go.
Let's vote on that.
You change your mind, you can't decide.
I'll take a time, I'll take a time.
Okay, there you go. Yeah.
It's like horse faces.
You can only vote once, Jack.
How many can come to you? Okay, so, okay, let's go to the next question. So you see how that works? Okay, now, here, there's no A, B, C, D, E. The answer should be one word, or if it's two words, just type in as one. The computer will put it in, and it kind of puts them all over the screen here. List your favorite snack. There's one, John already put his nachos.
Nachos.
Huh?
Someone like the sea otters.
Yeah, I see. And just beer, that's good. So just put in your favorite snack, hit send, and they'll all come up here. Nobody's put kale yet. So you see how that works? Yeah, maybe someone to point out to everybody. When we get to the word questions, you can keep on typing. You can put one in. Some of the responses are, if, on this, if you don't like nachos, or you want nachos, and you like beer, and you like all those things, what you can do is you can keep on putting those in. So if you have multiple answers on the word questions, you can just keep on doing that. And as we capture the information, it's in a more discernible way than all that.
Correct.
Yes. The staff sorts it out, it's, yeah, they're not guessing what all of that means. Okay, so everybody understands how it works. So let's go on to the questions of the night, and this is where we want, and these are in English and Spanish. Thank you, Google, for the Spanish. If the Spanish isn't right, blame Google, not Tracy. The, who are the people groups? Who are the people groups stakeholders we want to reach? Who do we want to reach to expand the input into the city, into the management, and the future, and the vision of where Winters will go? There are no wrong answers. And people watching on YouTube and on Facebook are putting these in as well. How many we got, John?
We have 18 people.
We have 18 people?
Facebook Live.
Facebook Live, so that's kinda cool. It's one of the answers right there about what we need to do in order. Okay, is everybody, no, everybody's still putting it in? Al's back there running a small model. Okay. Okay. That covering, and you know, everyone, right in the middle there. It's underrepresented business, you know, look at these, young people. You, you look around, nobody except Jesse, of course, and...
People who don't, I think we need to re-debate.
The city, the people who are on committees, who are on councils, they tend to be older. You know, we've got the time to do it, and the younger folks most today who work, both all, everybody in the house has got a job, and they're raising kids and everything, and they're really squeezed for time, and so the, it would be great to have that, you know, reach, do a better job of reaching younger people, where the city's going. Okay. Everybody's had a chance to put it in? Anybody still answering that? Okay. And as we go through these, and you think about them, and you go, I wish I would've said that, we're gonna come back at the end, and we're gonna kinda walk through them again. So, ah, and, and we're having more put up here as well. The, okay, next question. How do we get people to participate? How do we get people to put in the time to get involved? And it... And it, I forget how many years it is, I think I've been on this four years now, or five years, or something like that. And, and I've been to council meetings, and there are people who show up, complain, to use a nice word, and leave. And, and they're listened to. But the most exciting part is when somebody shows up, particularly if they don't agree with what's going on. We had it with the Airbnb ordinance that took some time to put together. And then they got involved, and they stayed involved, and they spent time with staff, and they attended more meetings, and they looked at other cities' things, and they came back, and the result was, we came up with, I think, a really good Airbnb ordinance for the city that involved all the stakeholders, involved people who wish it didn't exist at all, but yet they really worked closely with the Planning Commission and the council to get it. So participation is so important. How, how do we get people to participate? Leave city, leave city hall, get out of here. Have coffee. Have beer. Have wine. Social media, we're doing that tonight. But it keeps moving, does that mean people are still?
No.
Okay, great.
Hope not for you to do that. Help Shelley out here a little bit. Yeah. It seemed like it was going to be easier.
Auto size it. High-level meetings?
Yeah.
Groups, all the different groups in town, involve them. Opinion surveys, that's, yeah, we can do there, just kind of like what we're doing here, and it can go so far, what we can do online. We can do almost the equivalent of a, of a vote on things. Still going in? I think at some point it just keeps moving. Yeah. Now we said the next question. Okay, next question. What method or vehicle should we use for outreach? How do we reach people? Why, why is it consistent here? I think the key to our future is one.
Door to door.
Yeah.
Paul, my laundry is raining on.
Yes.
My messages are too long, but just quickly, one of the main things that I've noticed were sharing this, and social media, because people keep posting that up.
Yes.
It, just the way that Instagram and Facebook work, if you are an entity that's posting all the time, algorithms, then as other people are, are looking at stuff, your stuff is hidden. So if the city says, well, I posted it on our Instagram account, or I posted it on our Facebook account, and you're not posting all the time, we don't see it. So it might be that it's actually reaching out to other people in the community who have active accounts, and having them share. And that was way too long to type up.
So, yeah, you are 100% correct on that. So what is needed is some specific work on social media, how it works, and how it can be used effectively, because as you've said, it's very easy for it to get chewed up and, and, and spit out, and then people who, yeah, they say, go look at this. I go, what? It's not there, you know? And it, which is more about how much we use social media and all that, but the, okay, duly noted. Thank you.
Senator Paul?
Yep.
Just looking at this, you know, this whole pile of things kind of fine, but one of the things we'll do within the next couple of days is we will summarize these and post them.
Yeah.
In, in, in more of this format, because one of the things that we, we want to do, we'll summarize, we'll consolidate, new asset, but we'll, we'll also post these, because we're also going to put it in Google Docs, where people can get more input going forward. But we, we, we will summarize and list all of these.
And when we have something that is, you know, 30 people saying something, and maybe something else one person's saying, and that, that tends to kind of put the weight on, on the general opinion of, of what people are saying. So we are striving to come up with a format so you understand, so we can all understand what the community is telling us. And that's, Winters Express, very, how many times did you put that in?
Yeah, yeah. At least once.
Winters Express, advertising, Winters Express. Where do we get the outreach from people? A little different. Kind of same.
The question is where?
Where?
Where what?
Yeah.
Where do we get, where do we go to get the outreach?
Where do we go? Somebody said, one of these other things said, get out of city hall. Okay, where, where should we go? Let's say we're not going to meet in city hall.
Outside of the building.
Okay. Put it in. What is, what method were we using was the question before, and where do we go to get them? Kind of the same thing, but we're just trying to get more input. Kate, you were going to raise your arm, but you haven't, it was slingshot.
Is this for the overall?
This is for the city getting more input from the residents. That it's not this group of people at the table and some staff members making all the decisions, and listening politely to a few people who bother to show up and voice what they're voicing, and then we go on and make the decisions, very often based on what staff gives us. And this is an effort to expand that input, quantify it, measure it, and so that, that all the people involved in the decision-making can have a better idea of what does the community want. We're making decisions about the future of winters in the coming months. And we've been making them all along. It's certainly gotten some people's attentions, and the, and we're going to be making more of them. And we, we, the city, the council, the Planning Commission, the city staff wants the input from the residents, which we can do a lot better at getting than what we've done in the past. That's what this is about. And what do we put up there? Or, yeah, organizations, we talked about that today. Rotary, all getting all the organizations, give their, their input as an organization, what they're, what they think, what they see for the future of winters, the direction Co-organizations meet, yeah. Sorry, someone there, man. Is that an ad, Jack?
I understand, I understand, I do that one, because I'll do it, I'll do it again.
We should have charged for these ads. Never fooled us. Other cities, yeah. There are no bad answers. Okay. These questions start to sound very similar, but we're just, want you to think more about them. And next question. What approach to getting input and participation? Why are they lining up over there?
Facebook Live.
Facebook Live? I think you know. Is that it?
That's all.
It's getting up, thinking about it. Into the bottom line. Come to the city. Why is it doing that instead of what it was doing before? Just thinking? How many in this life with nothing, you leave with nothing in between is bacon and Listen, keeps coming up. Not just the normal suspects, yes, that's, that's broader participation, getting people to show up, getting, making it easy for them to show up. Okay. Are they all in a format like that?
Yeah.
All right.
It's this one.
Residents focus rather than staff. Piece of pie. That's the next question. What are we going to bribe them with? Yeah.
Childcare.
Free child. There you go. Already. Is it there? Childcare, okay.
That's what they do for PTA meetings, or any of those, you know, because it is very hard at this time.
It's, yeah. I think operating proceed. What type of incentives? When, when you want people to come to a meeting, it needs very often, it needs to be more than just, you know, they care. I think lots and lots of people care. Are there incentives that would make it, most of us have been to, or invited to come to a meeting, and you get there, and there's, you know, like, like the Oscars, and there's a $200,000 goodie bag on your chair. I don't think we can do that. But the, what incentives could be, could we come up with that would make it a broader participation, make it more fun when people make the effort? Most of us have been scheduled for a meeting at 6:30 or at 7:00 at night, and we wrote it down in the calendar, and we said, we told people we were going to do it, and then at 6 o'clock, and you're looking at the clock, you're going, oh, and it's kind of misty now, and, you know, do I really need to go to that meeting? What incentives could we do? Feeling heard. We'll get to that next, which is a key part of this process. If you're truly interested, you shouldn't need an incentive. It, it would be great if it worked that way, you know, but incentives help. Incentives really do. In business, people have a huge business interest in meetings that are really important to them, but yet they're busy, and it's amazing what companies do to get you to attend those meetings, even when it's your vested interest to be there. They, they go to great lengths. Pick you up in a fancy car and ride you there, you know, things like that. Because if it should be, just if we care, we show up, but it's, we've got to reach further than that.
Probably the most attended process that we've ever had was when we were putting together the downtown master plan. We had almost 100% attendance, and the meetings, we probably had 25 people at every single meeting.
Wasn't, wasn't one of them at Lake Tahoe?
Eh, we could have had it at Tahoe, but seriously.
Way back, yeah.
A little bit of food, and a little bit of beer and ice chest went a long way.
Yeah.
It really did.
To be heard, to be enabled, to be respected, to keep it down. Okay. Tracy, I'm tired, look at those. Okay. What are some of the key elements of community engagement of plan? What, so make it relevant, make it interesting. What should it be? What should, what should this engagement try to, try to address? And yes, they start to sound a little bit the same, but we, we can come up with some Dictator, don't love you. Okay, it's a different meeting for you to get to pick on John. That's not this meeting. Matter of fact, you'd come one, two weeks from today to the city, you know, to the city council meeting, and there's citizen input, and you'll have time to talk on any subject you want to. No limitations. Ah, except for time and programming. Value the response, and all of that starts to be a consistent theme. Constructive suggestions, which is under the, I don't like this, but then, okay, you don't like this, so then, then how do we fix this, or how do we change this, or what would you like? In business, I always worked on, feel free to bring me any problem you have, make sure you bring with you the answer to that problem. That's not for me to figure out, you should already know it when you come talk to me. Find out what we want. That's what we want to accomplish. Consensus. Consensus. What is the, how should we communicate with people that wanna be informed about this information, but they, they are, they have not participated, don't have the ability to participate, or have just chosen not to participate? How are we gonna spread this out to the rest of the community? Short videos, I like that. I like that. Who's got a iPhone 11? We're in the video business.
It comes tomorrow.
It comes tomorrow. And I just got my eight.
My six and.
Okay, my six died. With utility bills. I'm not doing this. I said short videos. Website, we have a city website. Websites can always do more. I've never seen a website that stays the same. They are constantly being upgraded, changed. Just when they get done, you go, great, we got that done. Figure it out, okay, we spent that money. Then they turn around and go, well, now it's on a date, you gotta redo it. Just figure it out. Somebody take Taylor's. Weekly update, we have a weekly update from City Hall. Is everybody in here on that weekly update?
No.
Okay, great. Lot of information there.
How do you get on that again?
Is there a lineup that want online product? Is there a way that people can sign up for that online?
I have your Friday update. I think on the city manager's page, I think it says, you can send me an email or a channel and all this, but that's why we went to the Facebook. I, I. Sometimes when you, when you send a lot of emails, for example, me, I send over 7,000 every Friday. And what happens is you get tagged spam, so I have to come in different directions. There's somebody with a life of name, I think somebody blacklisted on Gmail or something, and I, I couldn't get any emails to.
You could do it on a MailChimp blast or something.
Exactly. It could be MailChimp because then we.
Created as a newsletter blast, so it's not coming per your email address.
Yeah, I, I do update the website every week. And let's, see, it goes on website, it goes on social media, and I, I believe there are a lot of friends that, I put it up on Instagram, Twitter, and we do it.
Well, I totally agree with that. If you are getting opinions from people, and it's people who don't go on those social media things, but they do check email.
From the city website.
Yeah, it's posted on there.
Yeah.
Okay, the other end was how do we get, you know, the other question, but I think it really comes in with all the same answers. Those, be a lot of you who are participants in this process, the best way to we get this information to you, it's a lot of these same answers, right? And it, so. So what have we missed? What could we do better? What didn't we think of when going through these questions? I said those are, and that's my fault. Those are the same, what? Those who are not, it'd be next one.
Next one?
The next one. Who participated, those are all the same answers, I think, actually, now that I watched all those answers come up there. We changed the questions around today. Spanish-speaking facilitator. That is not the C minus in Spanish. Question by this man. Okay. So what have we missed? What should we have thought of? Did we miss anything?
I think we missed a timeline for this, like, what's the timeline of information? I guess there's a month, things, there's six months, what's the timeline?
What is the timeline? Immediately. And, and by when?
Well, by the, by the end of February, we will bring this back and we can have a meeting just like this again. Or we'll bring back a strategy that may be how to move forward with this.
The kind of, we talked.
But we, we have probably about 24 months of, of projects that are about ready to hit the pavement. That are mostly planning, policy, very important things.
And when those are done, there'll be another 24 months of, I mean, if this succeeds and, and we broaden the reach and get more people participating in the other things they wanna be involved with. That's the goal, a better process.
You know, Paul, Paul, yeah, it'll be in your paradigm.
Your paradigm.
For how we address this.
Yeah.
And how we do business.
We talked about like the, the second council meeting in February as a target for having a strategy and specifics to come out of this on, on how we move forward from there. So. We will not go there.
Why don't you move back?
Okay. First one. Let's just kinda jump through the. These are the questions, if any of you, you know, thought about things afterwards or other ideas, or you'd like to express a little more than just one or two or three words.
Do you guys put online that there's gonna be these same questions, like a Google survey or something also?
Um, with Google forms, these questions are all going to be accessible through the website after this meeting.
So when are we trying to shut it off to compile all of this?
By, by the second council meeting of, when is that? Of February. Do some quick math.
13.
Middle of February. Easy for me to say.
Have you already?
18.
Okay. What's a city have to do to know that, this question, to make, not just feel, what has to happen so that people feel they're heard? That's not a yes or no. Cause that's been expressed, that, you know, I brought up things, I've done things, and the train just keeps rolling. Yeah.
I think it seems like sometimes at, at meetings that the council members come already knowing how they're gonna go about things. So, and especially when time is limited, although I feel say, you know, P S has been wonderful about allowing longer time to discuss, but in the past, it's been cut off even when there's only a small number of people in the room. And so that really gives the message, yeah, we have to have community input because it's, we have to do it, but we're not.
Under Bill, and Bill taught me, what I'm doing here is, is we do have a time limit and we have, on a rare occasion, refer to it, but generally speaking, somebody's got something to say, we're, we're there to listen. So I mean, that's, Bill brought that to the, to the process, that's a good point, Sarah.
I think during the Complete Streets process in 2018, that we did that, that people felt pretty involved in it, it was an iterative process, so like there were three large meetings and, and I think all of them were small group discussions, and so people actually, like, they had to sit down and talk with each other, and you weren't necessarily sitting with people who came and took with the same opinions. And so within that group, we had come up with some consensus and, and then present that to the, to the larger group. And I think that made it so that we had to have real community discussion with people who, who may think differently and find out what works and what doesn't. And then, and I think it gave it so people had ownership of the discussion.
It's, it's very easy getting involved in a group where, where everybody thinks, has the same perspective. And so group, meetings and gatherings that involve people of very different perspectives will bring, that's a good point, good point. Okay. Yeah, yes.
Also, I'll bring back the Complete Streets, that, that that was, there was a real defined purpose. And so I think some of the answers for, say, for this evening might be more focused if once the purpose or topic of the outreach is defined, because it's, it's hard to just kind of give just a broad.
A generic.
Yeah, yeah, we're not sure what, you know, is, is a particular project, is there something the city's looking to do back on, or what, how can everybody's input be, be used, is there a problem, a program, or not to solve together?
Okay, so it'll, it'll have more meaning when it's more specific, which is a good point, good point. John, final words?
So the plan from this, within the next couple of days, we will have all of this. And for anybody, and I'm looking around the room, I have a lot of people in this room on my email list, but we'll post it on social media, on our Facebook, it'll, I'll put a link in, literally all of the, the list of all the information to these. And I'll put a link to the Google box form that we're gonna have for more of it. We're gonna take all this and we're gonna try and come back with, not just sort of recommendations, but maybe a very broad-based strategy that we can look to try and get a feel for this. And no, it will have many, many meetings like this, but we'll shrink it down. Who, who, who to talk to, where to talk to them, how to talk to them, what are some of the vehicles that we can use? And we'll break it down into, a lot of the input that we've received tonight, and no way, we'll, with the council, planning commission, the community, we'll try and come up with an overall strategy that says, you know what, here's some things that we can do. And then as we start moving forward on various projects, we'll try and plug in that strategy to best gain the input on particular topics. But within the next.
Could the next meeting include, touch on particular product, projects to attack?
No, you know, let's, let's focus on this.
Okay.
Who, who do we wanna talk to? How are we gonna do it? Where? All those types of things. There's a lot of really smart people that have got ideas on how to do it. And, you know, we'll see how successful putting some of the stuff up on, on, on Facebook Live was tonight and the like, but what we'll do is try and come up, at least with a draft of a strategy, and then what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna publish it. I will publish it out there and give people a chance to comment on it. Get out the blame and go forward.
Have we done Facebook Live for council or commission? We do the YouTube, right?
We always do YouTube Live, but we've never done the Facebook Live before, but we're trying to adapt tonight.
See how, we'll see what they thought of, those who are on the other end of it, see how they, how they felt about it.
Yeah, but we'll, we'll move forward and then, you know, there's gonna be a lot of trial there, we'll figure it out.
Okay. Council has anything else? Back to the mayor.
Anything else?
I wanna thank everybody for coming tonight and giving us your input on this review. We have some very important topics coming up in our future, for short-term and long-term future, so it's great for us to see people turn out and start getting involved and giving us input. Please go to all these other resources that we're gonna provide if you didn't provide input tonight, or if you talked to somebody who didn't know about it, let them know of the different ways that they can also participate on this process, so that it can get everybody's opinions and make sure that everybody's heard and that we listen to them and act on them appropriately. Thank you. On that, we'll move on to the city managers' report. No city managers' report tonight, so we will adjourn the meeting at 7:40.